I think you did, but it's a blur.
Here we go. I call to order this district to Clearwater Regular Council meeting for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021 at 2:00 PM. And I would like to start by beginning by acknowledging that we are fortunate to be gathering together on the unceded territory of the Sem people who have been caretakers of this land since time immemorial. Moving on to item three, introduction of late items. Are there any late items that anybody wishes to add to the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion and a second or two adopt the agenda? So moved by councillor Taylor, seconded by councillor Bamford, or something like that. All those in favor? And that passes. Adoption of the minutes, any errors or omissions that anybody sees? If none, can I get a mover and a second on that? Moved by councillor Frizzle, seconded by councillor Mackenzie, all those in favor? That passes. No unfinished business, no public or statutory hearings, no presentations, delegations. Moving on to item 10, mayor's report. Busy couple of weeks. For sure. Twenty-third was TNRD, lot going on down there. Lot of development in building, especially on ALR land occurring in the TNRD, so a lot of hearings on variances for things like that. Big developments going on around Adams Lake, which are stirring up quite a lot of controversy down there. The same day I did the mayor's vaccine roundtable call with Southern Interior Mills mayors that are in IHA area. And a lot of concerns about the accuracy of data that's being put out there by interior health and access to information on clinic dates. It's been slow and steady, but can confirm and did have a follow-up call with their head doctor in charge of policy. Expressing concerns especially related to schools and how information was related about exposures and actual confirmed cases at schools, and they're quite a far behind on that reporting. But they cite privacy issues as a reason why they don't put out more information, more useful information that could be used, say, in the North Thompson, which is all one area from basically just north of McClure to Blue River, which is quite a large geographic area to hand out good information and useful information for people like us. But I did make the point several times, so they are considering a change in strategy. The 29th was strat planning, strategic planning session. Good day, 110 items. You have your worksheets from that. Councillor Taylor and I are going to go over that day and then consult with Mr. Thomas after I get her up to speed. But I would encourage council to go back through those sheets again and look for items that you think may or may not be achievable. Or might be okay to take off that list, so we can further pare down that list. I think that's a worthwhile exercise, so that we're not investing staff time in things that may not be accomplishable. And that frees up room at a future date to consider new items. So Thursday, the 30th was the first National Day of Truth and Reconciliation out here on the field. Cindy Willgash and her team did a fantastic job organizing that heck of an event. Incredibly moving thing, very honored to be able to say a few words of that day. And it was, I think, a key event with the people that attended in reconciliation and moving our relationship forward with local First Nations. I thank councillor Mackenzie and family for attending on Sunday. Unfortunately, I got a little bit of a bug. Some bad symptoms and was on my way, but pulled the plug because I didn't want to risk. Possibly if I did have something, passing it on to anybody at that event, but councillor Mackenzie tell you about his day and his sore feet. And other than that, a lot of office time in here discussing citizen issues one-on-one and a couple of climate caucus meetings, talking about Canada's role in phasing down gasoline sales and what some of sort of green divesting of stocks and investments for local communities doesn't really affect us because we don't have a massive stock portfolio unlike some cities. And that is it for my report. I probably missed two or three things, but I'll turn it over to councillor Bamford for his report.
Thank you, Mayor Blackwell. First of all, I did a general setting for the infrastructure meetings that we had today with our CEO. Attended the planning workshop, district planning workshop, which is a good day. It was staff did a great job putting together materials. It was clear to understand, showed the amount of work that we don't see that actually happens by staff. And I agree to go through it again. I still haven't planned on doing that. And I attended part of the truth reconciliation. Really, I tried the afternoon portion, really moving sort of a thing. And then the speaker that spoke after they did the circle, really good speaker. Really a strong message. I really enjoyed that. And each of you have a UBCM report since I wasn't here last meeting that I typed up and gave to. And a couple of things that I did point out, you can read it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. On the first page, there was a policy paper that got put forward. And it's really quite an important policy paper, and it did go forward to government. And a couple of key points on it was looking at, they're taking forward the downloading of mental health addiction and homelessness costs onto municipalities instead of province or provincial government dealing with it. The cost of protective services needs to be given more recognition. Cost of protective services is going up and up and up, especially after this last fire season stuff, we know that. Cyber crimes, cyber crimes is another issue that the provincial government has a lot more capabilities to deal with it than we do, so they feel that that should be shared with municipalities. And there was some stuff about the carbon tax. On the other page, some of the really interesting things, I tend to search called modernizing forest policy, really, really a good session. And the key points were including global strategy and the intention papers, and it's on top of page three. I would just advise council that they really need to look at that if they can. The thing that they're really looking at is that attention paper is advising area-based tender pricing, which can have an impact on the recourse and will not. Right now, the pricing is different than market value, so they're looking at that. We'll see where that goes. Minimizing slash burning, which I think is slash files, because in the same thing, they're looking at creating a reintegration of prescribed fires and cultural fires. One of the things that can problem in the past is when they moved away from wildfires, which is burning a couple of slash on it. That ends up being a little fire hazard for several years because of the slash loading. So they're looking and trying to establish some of that at the same time reduce pile burning. And then they're looking at creating a value-added manufacturing program again, which would be a great thing if they did. They had a special sale category before. They're looking at recreating that, which would be really good for small businesses. And revising the BCTS maximum sale program. Other words, instead of 50,000 cubic meter sales, put up 5,000 cubic meter sales. Which again is really good for local small contractors, if you've been on small sale. Go through their homes instead of having really large sales that they need a lot of equipment to do. Attended the VC Liberal Caucus, it was really interesting that one of the points that came up in there, McBride was facing a housing issue. So they were told to reach out to a guy named Mike Premier to give some ideas, but the key point about was they needed to have land available. So either municipality or somebody else had to have land available in order to look at government funding, housing issues or supporting the housing. And there was a bit of discussion on the housing hub, and it was funny, interesting, there seems to be two streams to it, a nonprofit lending stream for lead-in churches and other things to build housing for the numbers and a profit stream, which is provides lower rate for lending for a quarter of housing. So read the report, there's some other key things in there that were quite interesting, but I wanted you to know what I attended and the community to know what I attended. So if you have any questions, like I say, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for your report, and I'll leave it to individual councillors to contact councillor Bamford on that later. And thank you for your detailed report because I'd already forgotten half the things I attended. Councillor Frizzle.
Thank you. I also attended the strategic planning meeting, which I found very informative, very interesting. It's a busy place we have here. We've also, I also had a meeting with the man shed that we had 10 or 11 men out in the field that are very excited to get going. The two guys that are going to be moving forward as leaders gone into the, the the place and checked it all out, and they're having the first meeting tomorrow, having people come down and actually have it. A man shed meeting, so they're on their way and we'll see what happens. I wish them luck. I also attended a Costco conference virtually, that's the Council of Senior Citizens. No, no, that's Costco. It was really interesting because all the ministries are there, Mr. Housing Education, Health, that talked at the UBCM, but they talked with the seniors lens, and the one thing that was really stressed to them and throughout the whole thing was working with seniors, not for seniors. So that was the prevailing theme throughout. I also attended the fire department recruitment campaign last Sunday, which was really good because I had taken a tour there before, but they've expanded quite a bit, so it's quite a more things for me to see there. I also attended the truth and reconciliation last Thursday. That was really humbling and really, really heart-wrenching, and I'm so glad that I attended. And I think that is all that I did this last two weeks.
And the farmers market harvest fair.
And the harvest market. We had lots of big pumpkins and squash and pumpkin pies.
Yeah, it was good. Yes, yes, we had to judge the pumpkin pie tasting competition. There are some days that are just really hard on this job. Councillor Herring is away. Councillor Mackenzie.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Blackwell. September 29th, I also attended the strategic planning workshop. And once again amazed with how many little, how many things are going on for such a small town. The list keeps growing and yeah, that never ceases to amaze me with that. September 30th, attended the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation here as well at the field. Only was able to make half of that, but it's honor to be able to be there, just being in this valley my whole life and knowing a lot of them from down there. It's kind of has a special place, so I'll show my support for them. October 1st, I went in and attended their opening ceremony with Simp at the residential school for their, to kick off the walk and just to stand on the sidelines and see how they go through things with the ceremony and you'd have to be there to really feel it, but pretty neat to be a part of that as well. And October 3rd, participated in the last leg of the walk to bring the children home. 20 kilometers in total from Fadyer Park and Barrier up to the band office. I haven't walked that far since my first trip to Vegas, so my hips are just coming back under me now, starting to feel back to normal. So in total, they ended up walking 53 kilometers for the walk. So yeah, it was pretty neat to be a part of that. Chief Loring and her husband have been friends of mine long before we were elected officials, and so it wasn't just going as a council thing, it was also going to support people I've grown up with and I know half of the people in tune to us, so just to be a part of it. Lots of good drone footage on their website and whatnot and I guess that wraps that up for me for the last week.
Thank you for doing that, you know, obviously for yourself and then representing Clearwater as well, a very important thing. Definitely a humbling invitation for sure, so thank you for that. Councillor Sim.
So just on the heels of that, again, extended thanks for what you did, but also to the mayor, I don't know how he was able to come after two speakers on the, on the day and be able to capture such a great tone of day and intention. So thank you very much for that. And the thing that struck me is for next year is I'm wondering, or I hope that we will be at a point where we can all help set up for the day. That was one thing that really struck me is that it was important to listen and next year I hope we can help. And to that, have there been murmurings around this council table about having ordered another big tent? Can we look into that or some, or I don't know if.
We can bring that back, we'll bring it back to Parks and Rec or one of those. There are so many tents around this town, I would actually be happy to start talking. Maybe we need a tent registry because YCS has about 12 of them now. Tim Hortons has one that loan out.
No, I'm talking about the big.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, but yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, we have not, but let's bring it back to Parks and Rec.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that there's a budget allocated for that in some pocket, and it would be really nice to have something that had the district and reflective of current participants in our community.
I'm sure we had two, four or three. We had the can.
And for a warehouse.
It's the can for one that we're looking to replace or to.
Anyways, that's, that's a short, long conversation.
Yeah, long, point taken. So for that one, I'd really like to look onto that one. And just following on the heels of, you know, the comments about the exposures in the interior and the changing information that's coming out of interior health. Interior health schools have certainly seen an influx of cases. So there has been a change from the Ministry of Health and the Provincial Health orders about how schools will be reporting. They had hoped that with the number of vaccinations that there wouldn't be the report. So I think what's really important is that where we were a year ago is not where we are today. And I think that what's being stressed is what we see within our schools is a reflection of what's going on out in our communities. And to keep that vigilant behaviors up. That said, that they will be reporting, they will be reporting differently because when there are exposures, it really all depends on if the person's been vaccinated or what the point of contact. So the school district is going to do, we'll be seeing a lot more communication to helping clarify where we are currently. So there will be a letter in the paper this week from the superintendent. I'm almost wondering if maybe we should get the district on the email list from the superintendent's office. Right, there's also a link that will be on the website that people can go to to see the number of exposures. Because of the increased numbers of exposures, interior health is now reporting by school, so you can go to a link on their page. It won't be letters that are, you know, going out the way that it was. And so there's just a change even in the health check, whereas last year, if you even had a sniffle, you were asked not to go to come to school. This year, that's been changes. So I think what people are recognizing is, is that the world has been built on sand over the past 18 months. And to try and build up some new concrete structures that provide some, you know, confidence to our community and to get up-to-date and accurate information. So I'll ask the superintendent's office to keep council involved. Probably a great idea for all councils to be considered to that. And I think I will just call it there.
Yeah, thank you. Everything, so the mayor's vaccine roundtables delta, especially in schools, is a different beast. And is affecting things and quite so you're 100% right on it. It's quite a different thing from last year. Councillor Taylor.
So nothing for me to report. I will add on to councillor Sims' report, just a note around testing, and we have this great easy facility at the hospital to get tested. So if you are showing those symptoms, it's really important because chances are it's a cold or a flu, but it's really important that the community knows, so encouraging people to get tested if they have symptoms.
Thank you for that. Now, that was one of the criticisms or one of the comments. One of the comments I wanted clarification from interior health on because they're really, their messaging from high up is that testing will not occur unless you have distinct COVID symptoms. Whereas my understanding on the ground is that testing is a little bit easier if you just go ask if you have concerns about your health. And, and we've had the conversation around this table that we're all one degree of separation from everybody in this town, so that will be something that clarification would be great on. That's a good point. Thank you for that.
I will just follow up, and also what we will be seeing more of is SD 73 doing more communications through the info board, which is a strange thing, but it was brought up, the fact that we don't get news the same way that other people do. So being able to provide timely and accurate news is also really important. And that school district, we take the lead from interior health, you know, and we just have to stay in our lane and act accordingly.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, everybody else communicates through new media, so the school, we're jumping on with that as a great idea, especially on something that requires timely action. Moving on to committee, the whole minutes, minutes of the economic development committee of the whole meeting held September 22nd, there is secondary on that, so I'm on councillor Mackenzie, all those in favor? That passes, committee, the whole reports, active councillor.
Meeting will be November 2nd.
Infrastructure councillor Bamford.
Your next meeting is November the 16th, but we did have a meeting earlier today. And at that meeting, we had a update from the fire department about looking at fire department equipment rentals for 2022 and setting some rates, there was a motion passed, that's coming on the regular council agenda today. We had an update on the water system and capacities. And there is a motion that was passed, and again, it's coming forward, and it lifted the restrictions put in place for 2021. And we're having staff look at a policy for 2022, which will set new watering restrictions and have trigger points for actions to be taken depending upon the situation, if it was a simmer as we had this last summer. We did have an update on song number one, what's going on, and we had a bit of a discussion around the master plan for stormwater. And staff is going to bring a report back, but as well, the mayor suggested it's a great idea to talk to Ministry of Highways and Transportation and Structure on the issue around the road, very hotel where the runoff does wash across the road there as well. Our report from today.
Thank you for that thorough summary. Yeah, and question from councillor Sim, perhaps?
I just wondered is if they had, if our winter water use is still as high as it has been?
I could put that to staff or staff can get back to you. I think it's a fairly, fairly thing. Yeah. I, yeah, I think we'll have a look at that. The staff can bring that back.
And the secondary question is, is I thought that when those culverts had been put in at the Wells Gray Inn, it was to mitigate that problem, so.
It's not an issue with the culverts, it's an issue with the slope of the grade of the road. Is there's a soft shoulder there and an asphalt shoulder there, and it's actually the soft shoulder is higher than the asphalt shoulder in certain places there, so it's running water off of the road surface that's not gravity feeding into the dish and still spraying it across.
So it's a them issue.
It's a them issue. Yeah, it's a highways issue. It's just a minor correction of grade probably that needs to be done, but it's not our problem. It's completely on highways to rectify the issue and why we have to bring it forward to discuss in the earlier meeting is because in the past, water overflow off of that beyond the fact that it's spreading gravel onto a paved surface. Water overflow from there and the past has come down and ended up on Harvey Road, causing us problems and expense, so we'll take that at some point. I'm sure we're going to have a meeting with MLTI at some point in the near future, just incidentally anyway, so. That's what it's about. If that answers.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, okay. Right, Parks and Rec, and apparently you're adding tents to that agenda, councillor Mackenzie.
Yeah, next meeting will be October 19th.
Thank you. Councillor Herring is not here, but we're having a finance and audit meeting later today at 4 o'clock to kick off the next round of budget. Standing committee reports, 14-1 Joint Services Advisory Committee, the next meeting will be November 8th. Trails Task Force, up here, there's been a few meetings.
Yeah, the next meeting is not being scheduled yet, and I wasn't able to attend the last one.
Junior council.
To be announced.
However, I think we should forward the item from the end.
Yes, I was going to just say that.
Yeah, for the yeah. Legislature, it's on the last page of your agenda, it's the last page of your agenda. It's a great thing.
BC Youth Parliament.
That's the one. Thank you. Yeah, great idea. Foresty Working Group, councillor Bamford.
Thank you, Mayor Blackwell. We haven't scheduled another meeting yet, but maybe we're sometimes discussion between myself just to look at some of the stuff regarding the modernizing of forest policy. Because our input is still available till the end of this year. Okay, so there is some stuff on there that
So I'm going to suggest that you discuss that with Mr. Thomas, and if I'm here for an office day, we can schedule maybe a meeting before the end of the year to Yeah, yeah, if there's enough, if there's enough interest in doing that, so that's a good idea. Next one is councillor Frizzle, county economic development task force.
And I just discussed with the mayor earlier today, maybe we should have one around middle of November. We can discuss the date.
Yeah, we have a topic or two. Committee representation reports, Tourism Wells Gray.
And there is a meeting tomorrow. I hope that maybe the minutes of the last one might have been ready for today, but they haven't been received yet. I won't be in attendance tomorrow, so if anybody wants to attend and hear how they're going with the information center, that meeting is at 12.
Is at 12, okay. See what I can do. Wells Gray Community Forest Commission, councillor Bamford. Recruitment retention committee, which apparently is one of our committees, councillor Sim.
And we are scheduled to have one next week, and I just spoke to Mr. Thomas about that. I think it's important, I was just finishing a call right now. BC is in deficit of doctors in the amount of 600. 600, and I also think it's important because in comparing some of the regions around the province, our particular part of the world could bump up some of its, its exposures in terms of attracting. I think other areas are doing a stronger job. And currently we are sitting at two and a half doctors, we need four. So I think that, you know, even just making sure that there's still momentum to that committee and ensuring the terms of reference, it would be important.
Yeah, 600 short. Councillor Bamford, you had a question on that?
Real quick question, maybe councillor Sims. How are we doing our locums? Anyone in the past? We've been lucky with locations where we're also held a month of preparations.
Well, you know, it's just proving that the old adage is it's not what you know, it's who you know, and we have a great locum who's here right now, and they are actually friends of residents, and I know that the residents are trying very, very hard to create a very welcoming environment. They were here at the farmer's market, they came to the truth and reconciliation day and were delighted when they were surprised with a nice gesture at dinner that night on behalf of mayor and council.
So yes, councillor Sim did ask me in advance if we could pick up the tab on dinner, and I said yes, so I forgot to tell Mr. Thomas that.
I told Mr. Thomas.
Okay, good.
Anyway, it was a very small thing, but the joy was great, so I think we're doing great. And again, it's that word of mouth and how we create community at the grassroots that is generating interest and energy.
Yeah, and I did speak with the local couple that were friends of theirs, the next morning they randomly ran into me and they were humbled and moved by the gesture of council and by reconciliation day, and they thought they were just so happy to be Clearwater residents, so.
Just been so lucky with that. Nice to hear. But takes the pressure off two and a half.
It does, but it's also even somebody who's been a past local here is now a part-time doctor, is that half position, so it's a great recruitment tool to get people to commit, and then there's the YCS taking over the management of the medical center, and there's a whole other thing there that's happening. Anything further on that, councillor Sim?
No, that's in it.
Moving on to item 16-1, CAO report, you have in your agenda, the CAO report on pages 15 to 18, once again, a lot going on. Any questions of Mr. Thomas on that report? Councillor Frizzle first.
Question and a statement. Transit piece that were waived for election day, did anybody take advantage of that?
I haven't got a report on that yet, but I will follow up.
Hopefully somebody did. And the one thing I just wanted to make note on is community recreation, healthy living program. Sam and I hosted the vaccine passport health clinic on Friday in the seniors room. We helped 10 people that day. in the seniors room. We helped ten people that day get their vaccine passports onto their phone and or laminated whichever they wanted. And I have four follow ups afterwards with people that, oh, I forgot. And so I did. So that was, it was good. It was to help fourteen people.
Excellent. I had no idea that was going on. That's a great idea. Thank you.
And that was Ms. Megan. Okay, I didn't. I just wanted to make sure.
I, I got the distinction between Miss Sim and Miss. Any further questions? I think Council Banford actually had a question on.
But I'm not sure whether it's really needed right now, but it's just a question around the violent alert system and appears that's activated. That's something that staff could probably hold off on for a little bit. And maybe make sure the spring or something like.
The buoyant alert system.
It was, it was something that T N R D did, but it was mainly to register for the wildfire situations. So just a matter of thinking that workflow for staff. We really don't need to push the registration campaign right now.
It's a pretty, pretty, pretty simple registration campaign, but I, I think, you know, once staff is confident that everybody's trained and up to speed. One of the issues with the, the T N R D and the city of Kenwood's rollout was having everybody on the same page on it. And there were some errors in it. So I, you know, once staff is confident, it's, I'll let Mr. Thomas speak to it.
We had the two training session with Voiant Alert. Right now we're focusing on making sure the front desk staff who would likely receive and have to triage questions have a comfort level with the system as well. We are hoping to work with Council Frizzle and the seniors network to support a campaign for the, to help people in the community register for the system as well. And so I anticipate more to come out on that chart. Most of it is being spearheaded by Stephanie.
Any further questions of Mr. Thomas? Oh, good work. Excellent work there. And yeah, buoyant is for everybody. Voyant runs on email. They will call your landline or they send you a text message. They have multiple avenues. So it's a good alert system sort of unlike anything else that goes on there. So I'm glad that we have that tool in our toolbox now. And then item six, two for water restrictions. There is a recommendation that council direct staff to lift the currently posted watering restrictions and the council direct staff to develop a multi-stage schedule from May to September regarding watering restrictions with transitions between stages determined by predefined criteria and report back to council. So we discussed this as councillor Banford, maybe you want to speak a little bit to, to what it means on triggering and things like that.
We had a discussion and we discussed it today at the basically, as you all know, we set different water restrictions last year because of the wildfire risk and some of the reservoir problems. So what we have to do now is lift the motion that we had. And hypothetically, then we go back to the old watering restrictions, but what we have talked about is having staff come back with a report to say, here's what our recommendation is for new watering stuff for next year, which will probably not be six to ten. You know, in the morning and the evening, but maybe cut it back to what it was seven to nine or something and maybe have it in the morning. Come back and look at that and reducing the amount of water that we use for watering because we don't need it. As well, that report wants to include some trigger points to say, if this happens, be it drought conditions, be it so many days where the wells can't keep up and the reservoirs low. Here's what will happen. It will trigger the they come back with. So it won't be a random discussion by council or random decision. It'd be a policy with trigger points in place that will automatically trigger something. So allow staff to take action without having made it come to council with a resolution to do it.
Great explanation. Thank you. So there is a recommendation. Do you wish to move that recommendation, Council Banford? And do I have a second or on that? Counselor Fizzle, thank you. All those in favor. Thank you. Great move forward. Item sixteen point three, twenty twenty one Wells Gray Community Forest Corporation grant application for fire department S P U trailer equipment. Does anybody speaking to this one? Page twenty two to thirty one. So yeah, maybe, maybe come up and speak to this a little bit. Chief Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So back in two thousand twenty, we got a grant to do part of the trailer from the Red Cross through our Fire Chiefs Association. We've got about half the equipment with the trailer. So the rest of the items, they're kind of listed in one of the tables here, come to about sixty five grand after tax. So we're looking to see if we can get funding through the community forest. And then in the next table there. So this trailer can be rented out with all the other fire department equipment through the P C Welfare Service, O F C, Fire Commissioner. So this trailer is very specialized. It can do about thirty homes, needs five personnel to run it. There's different rates for if our personnel go or just the trailer goes. They're listed in the, in the second chart here. Basically a two week stint for this trailer can make a fair, fair amount of money to come back to the district to help build the fire department reserves is what we're, where we put all that money after paying the firefighters.
They're rate rates. Thank you for making that point. I think that's an important point on this. Questions of Mr. Smith on this, our chief Smith, sorry.
One question, no comment about the motion they run up again, but one question to staff right now or if they're deployed. Our situation changes here or we locked into that commitment and just deploy. Just like we talked about earlier, we were setting the rates. For Troy, I think you can have that here versus somewhere else, like somewhere else in the province. Do you know that you can call that back if the situation? We may deploy and we're a little risk. Also, we get far that breaks out and we would need that.
That's the discussions with the, in their, in their agreement as well as prior to deploying it, we would have that same like if we want to build that policy about our equipment actually going out, we would determine the risk factor before we, you know, send it out. We wouldn't say, yes, okay, we're, we're in extreme for two months, say. Yeah, let's go send this somewhere else. No, we would probably want to keep that equipment here. Also, as well, Blackpool Fire Department, they also have the same type of trailer. So there's this fully equipped now as well. So and then on, on that note as well, there's a fair amount of these trailers in inventory throughout the province. So if ours is out somewhere. Could make it sway this way. Help us if we get into that situation.
Were there questions or comments?
My only questions for council considers around the I spoke to say about this briefly, but in the mirror. You know, also talk to council about putting in I'm occurring that I think of the cost for this facility and our C P and our model three. And I'm not sure about putting two forests at the same time. It was a matter of, but again, it's saying, I agree with this proposal to facilitate trailer, but is it better off holding off putting it in April or May and split those two requests? Put in one now for generators to get that going forward because I think that's probably a critical thing for this building and especially for the wells. Tie the R C P M. Or at least give the heads up that we're going to do that so you get the cost. And putting this request in possibly for fire department things in April or May or something like that. As well, the fire department, as you can see in the past, has got a new V C M grant for forty thousand dollars. So if there was an opportunity available for another grant for firefighting equipment and you could go to the course and ask for matching funds, that just strengthens the case. So it's just a thought. Table this one and put it in like March or April and put in one for the generator right now first. So if you're having two going to the green forest at one time.
Counselor Sim first.
Um, I think some work has been done on gathering some information for that. And I, I agree with, with the thought process and that I am wondering because we've still got some work to do. This report is ready to go. It may take some time to compile all of these pieces, and I'd rather see that was, I think a generator is kind of compact. And with the deadline coming of next week, I feel really confident about going forward with this. And sometimes if there are supplies issues or anything like that, our fire department at least is going to be well stocked. We are looking at the, you know, thirty homes, which I think is really proactive. And I think that there's going to be room for, for both in the conversation. I think that we're also going to may, maybe seeing some different opportunities for disaster mitigation coming out, and that may be another opportunity for the generator, but not something specific like this. That's just my thoughts.
Any further questions or thoughts from council? Yeah, I, I could go either way on this. I, I think there's room within the community for society for both grants, but at the same time, yes. Somebody who sits on that will have to step out on this decision. I have seen some resistance to multiple grants at the same time. So the school, this, the, the, sorry, the, the high school is famous for four or five at the same time. So, but, but saying that is usually successful of the form of live on when they do that. So I could go either way on this. Anyways, there is a recommendation on the table. Does somebody wish to move the recommendation? We have a second or on the recommendation. Thank you, councillor Taylor. All those in favor of the recommendation? Oh, sorry, discussion we could, but anybody in the discussion. Okay, can I call the vote again? Sorry, all those in favor of recommendation. Okay, so. Oh, I don't know if we have.
I will though.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I agree with that. I think, I think giving heads up on a, a large grad request and the reasoning, the initial reasoning behind it, even without costing at this point, is probably a great idea. And yes, thank heavens. We've got a Wells Gray Community Forest. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item sixteen point four D V T or Z D V P twenty one oh two. There is a recommendation that development variance permit number D V P twenty one dash zero two for two oh nine Dutch Lake Road Lot District. Lots three eight five one, Calhoun's Division Yale District Plan. Ten eight nine eight be issued. And you're wondering about this one. Yes, are we speaking to this?
This is just a development permit variance for the rebuilding of the chip silo that burned down November twenty, twenty twenty. And so the D V P is needing to be put in place before we can get the building permits issued.
So we're doing what to ourselves, what we do to others. So can I get a mover in a second on this one? Move it. Moved by councillor McKenzie, seconded by councillor Banford. District to Clearwater bylaw number two, five, six, twenty twenty one, a bylaw to amend District of Clearwater Council procedure bylaw number. That's not what I'm doing. Anyways, I'm on the wrong one. All those in favor? How about that? I'm ahead of myself. And that passes. Uh, okay, moving on to this one, which I've already started to read. Bylaw number two, five, six, twenty twenty one amendments, council procedure bylaw number one, three, one, twenty fourteen. There's two recommendations, but maybe I'll get staff to just explain this one out a little bit. This is about electronic meetings, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. Thomas.
Yes, there are a couple of things that the bylaws proposing be amended. One to allow for council, the option to hold virtual meetings on an indefinite basis going forward, subject to COVID restrictions. Bill ten was passed and was brought into force in September twenty ninth, which authorizes councils to update their procedure bylaws to make that a reality. The other thing council, the amendment is proposing is to add the traditional territory acknowledgement, which is currently in practice. The development and zoning item earlier in the agenda to allow for T N R, the district planning personnel to present a council and move forward. And what else? Section fifteen of the balla does deal with this. Section twelve, which deals with the regular council meeting, and that's about it.
And just for clarification, digital, the, the either fully digital or, or partial digital, partial in person meetings that we've been holding under COVID, that was under a special.
Ministerial order.
Yes, it'll order from the province of British Columbia. So, so that will eventually expire at some point, and this is how we move forward with the option for digital.
Correct.
The among the other things covered in this.
Correct. The ministerial order has expired and was replaced by bill ten, which precipitated this work.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Thomas on this? This is actually, I think, a huge move, move forward for, for councils, especially recruiting people. As noted earlier, with a thousand people being claimed and corbacked of attracting people to be able to, to be part of a council moving forward without the time commitments of always being here in person. So there is two recommendations there. Recommendation one, somebody wish to move this. Thank you, councillor Taylor. Seconded by councillor McKenzie. Thank you for getting on the agenda there. So now I read this fun thing because this is the part I love reading bylaws, district to Clearwater bylaw number two, five, six, twenty twenty one, a bylaw to amend District of Clearwater Council procedure bylaw. Number one, three, one, twenty fourteen, whereas section one thirty seven of the community charter provides that the power to adopt the bylaw includes the power to amend or repeal it. And whereas under one section, one twenty eight of the community charter, council may authorize electronic meetings and participation by council members. And whereas the council of the district of Clearwater wishes to amend the District of Clearwater Council procedure bylaw number one, three, one, twenty fourteen, and now therefore the council of the district of Clearwater and open to meeting assembles and access follows. This bylaw may be cited as the District of Clearwater Procedure Amendment bylaw number two, five, six, twenty twenty one. All those in favor? Passes and then recommendation number two. Okay, we'll let Mr. Banford, our councillor Banford and seconded by councillor Taylor. This is for second and third reading. Together, a bylaw to amend the District of Clearwater Council Procedure bylaw number one, three, one, twenty fourteen, whereas section one thirty seven of the community charter provides the power to adopt the bylaw includes the power to amend or repeal it. And whereas under section one twenty eight of the community charter, council may authorize electronic meetings and participation by council members. And whereas the council of the district of Clearwater wishes to amend District of Clearwater Council Procedure bylaw number one, three, one, twenty fourteen, and now therefore the council, the district of Clearwater and open meeting assembles and access follows. This bylaw may be cited as the District of Clearwater Council Procedure Amendment bylaw number two, five, six, twenty twenty one. All those in favor? Thank you. Now, moving on to one of our favorites, permissive tax exemption. The shepherd usually handles this stuff, but there is a bit of a report here. So you have an understanding of the properties that are covered by this. Are there any questions of staff on this? Seeing none, can I get a mover in a second? I'll give you a little bit of time if you want to have a look there. I've noticed that so that the churches and the shepherd, the churches when it comes up, when generally the religious.
Next year.
It's next.
Yeah.
Yeah, there should be some changes on that one.
Places of worship is, can be a five year according to our policy of five year bylaw, nonprofits of three year and affordable housing tenure.
Ten year, right? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Counselor Sim.
For the legion, is that, that's a hundred percent on their area or is it divided because they bought some rental spaces or how does that work? Or is it just an entire exemption?
It is an entire exemption, a hundred percent exemption for all properties on this bylaw.
Thank you.
Good point. Any further questions? If not, we If not, we were in a second or on the recommendation one. Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Thank you, Counselor Frizzle for seconding that. District of Clearwater Bylaw Number two, five, seven, twenty-one, permission of twenty twenty-one, permissive tax exemption, a bylaw to provide for permissive tax exemption for non, not-for-profit in accordance with section two, two, four of the community charter for a three-year term. Whereas section two, two, four, two A of the community charter provides for the exemption of any land or improvements that item I are owned or held by a charitable philanthropic or other not-for-profit corporation and to or double I, the council considers are used for a purpose that is directly related to the purposes of the corporation. And whereas section two, two, four, two B of the community charter provides for the exemption of any land or improvements that are owned or held by a municipality, regional district or other local authority and the council considers are used for a purpose of the local authority. And whereas section two, two, four, two, one, I of the community charter provides for the exemption of land and or improvements owned or held by an athletic or service club or association and used as a public park or recreation ground or for public athletic or recreational purposes. Now therefore, council of the District of Clearwater in opening meeting assembles and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the District of Clearwater Permissive Tax Exemption Not-for-Profit Bylaw Number two, five, seven, twenty twenty-one. All those in favor? Wow. Just for that, I'm taking a drink. Well, it's already in the recommendation, but if somebody wants to are you going to ask to divide second and third reading together? That would be me. On the second and third readings, do I have a mover or a second or? Are you going to move that one and seconded by, thank you, Council McKenzie? Sorry. Here we go. District of Clearwater Bylaw Number two, five, seven, twenty twenty-one, permissive tax exemption, a bylaw to provide for permissive tax exemption for non-for-profit in accordance with section two, two, four of the community charter for a three-year term. Whereas section two, two, four, two A of the community charter provides for the exemption of any land or improvements that are owned or held by a charitable philanthropic or other not-for-profit corporation and the council considers are used for a purpose that is directly related to the purposes of the corporation. And whereas section two, two, four, two B of the community charter provides for the exemption of any land or improvements that are owned or held by a municipality, regional district or other local authority and the council considers are used for a purpose of the local authority. And whereas sections two, two, four, two I of the community charter provides for the exemption of land or improvements owned or held by an athletic or service club or association and used as a public park or recreation ground or for public athletic or recreational purposes. And now therefore, council of the District of Clearwater in open meeting assembled and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the District of Clearwater Permissive Tax Exemption Not-for-Profit Bylaw Number two, five, seven, twenty twenty-one. All those in favor? Can we do this every five years just so I don't have to read this that often? Just saying thank you to everyone for that one. And I'm sure all those clubs appreciate the tax exemption, especially after two, a year and a half of COVID. Moving on to correspondence items. There's some interesting stuff in here today. Item eighteen, one childcare DC new spaces fund. Yeah, we could just forward it to YCS for information if that's where you wish.
I think on this one, it is a growing mandate under the Ministry of Children and Family Development.
Yeah.
Clearwater Barrier and Babenby are, and Blue River are pretty much the only school spaces
Yeah.
that have availability. So it is something to kind of keep an eye on because there will be some funding attached to it and how that kind of rolls out. Not saying that there's tons of space left in, in Raft River, but they do have the, where the resource center was, although it's, yeah, the old annex. Um, but I can see growing pressures and maybe, you know, just our engagement or endorsement will be important coming down the pipeline. So I just flag it for pay attention.
Yeah, good point. And we seem to have a lot more little kids in this town. So.
Yeah, which is great.
Which is great. Yeah. Um, so there's no decision of council other than to look at it. So that's good correspondence. You want to do something on that?
No, I don't. But you see, the problem is that the funding is restrictive. That means, okay, no, non-for-profit organizations, we could forward it to Yellowhead. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, yeah, Mr. Coates will probably be a good filter for that.
Typically, council has offered to pay for one of those. I don't know if we want to do that again or not.
Is it in person?
No.
Okay. So yeah, do you want, does somebody want to make a motion to cover the cost for one student if one student wishes to?
Lynn's the representative. Why don't you make that?
Okay, second or on that? Yeah.
I'll second.
Second that. Thoughts of council, questions of council? Yeah. Sure, we can pull that out of a council contingency or somewhere, Ms. Shepherd. Where I, you know, spend money without actually figure that one out for twenty-five.
Council putting a cap on the support?
Um, I think the registration fees are four seventy-five, but we could, we, or four twenty-five, but we could do five hundred or something. I think in the past we've covered a little bit of travel or something.
Well, they also said here that there is
a portion covered.
There is a portion covered by.
Oh, is there? Okay, so, right. Let's, let's, yeah. So we'll make that a friendly amendment to the motion and Counselor said, you're okay with five hundred? Yeah, thank you. Okay. All those in favor? Sending kids to learn about government because boy, we do, we need them. And then the last item, ambulance paramedics basically asking if we missed out on anything. We're more than happy to, they're more than happy to talk to us about things and very happy with our twenty-four hour improved ambulance service. And Counsel, sorry, Mr. Thomas, do you have further comment?
Just the question, mover and seconder for the motion?
Sorry, Counselor Frizzle moved and seconded by Counselor Sim. Okay, yes, I know. Yeah, a lot of hot, a lot of happy small towns on the ambulance paramedic situation this fall. A lot of, a lot of places fought for a lot of years, not just us. I actually had a conversation about that with former mayor Harwood this morning. He's in good spirits, by the way. Very over grand childhood. No notices of motion, no other business. Comments from the public. Hello, public. To say? Yeah, we're glad you're back too. Thank you. Yep. So thank you. That's it from the public for now. We have special business moving camera. There's a recommendation that the meeting be closed to the public pursuant to sections ninety-one, AG and J of the community charter discuss matters relating to personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered for a position as an officer, employer, agent of the municipality or another position appointed by the municipality litigation or potential litigation of fiscating the municipality and information that is prohibited or information that if were presented in a document would be prohibited for, from disclosure under section twenty-one of the Freedom of Information and Privacy or Protection of Privacy Act. Can I get a mover in a second? Yeah, but thank you. Moved by Council McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Frizzle. You get your name on the agenda by doing this. So we'll take about a five-minute recess to clear the room and get set up.